I now call to order the May 20th, 2019 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees. Current time is 6:01. The minutes show that our board is present, all members in attendance. If you're a student and you're being recognized, you'll be in the back, so if you're out here, be right there. Am I good? Okay. So please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell, standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and honor the Texas flag, to be led by Mr. Mixon.
Hi, please bow. Mother, thank you for bringing us to this place tonight to celebrate our students. We're thankful for our staff, for our students, our employees, all of them. We thank you for the things that they do on a daily basis for our students and go above and beyond. Be with the first responders who keep us safe and for the soldiers who are fighting to keep us safe and for our freedom abroad. Be with us as we depart, and God bless America in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, on the Texas flag, our country to be Texas. This is all. Time two on the agenda is student recognition. We're gonna have multiple sponsors during this presentation, so... Mr. Scott Powers can start it off.
Welcome to the May 29th meeting of the New Caney ISD Board of Trustees. My name is Scott Powers. I'm Executive Director of Public Relations for the School District. This is a special meeting each May. We recognize students across the district that qualify for state or national competition. We've got a lot of students, thirty-one student groups. They're gonna come out from this way, come across here, be recognized by the board. We're gonna move them out on the patio, actually out on the field, take a quick picture of each group. So families, if you're not gonna stay with us, you can meet your students out here on the patio, and the exits are, or the gates on the other side are open, you can exit that way. So without further ado, I'll pass this off to our first presenter. I think it's Architecture and Building Trades, Pete Christian, Can you ask him?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Pete Christian. I teach Building Trades at Duquesne High School, part of the Architecture and Building Trades Group. I'd like to thank, before we get started, the board for their hard work, Board of Trustees, Mr. Franklin, and our Career Technology Department, Mr. Warsh Stripling, for his support. Without these guys, we couldn't do it, so thank you very much. First, I want to recognize Cesar Benyon. He's the president of our Building Trades Club, and he competed the second year at the TSA Competition in Fort Worth, he took fourth place, with a beautiful garden chair, Cesar. Next is Julio Vasquez. He competed at the TSA again in Fort Worth and took third place with a beautiful dresser he built out of mahogany. Next is Jayla Smith. She's one I'm very proud of. She came in and worked hard every day and took Best in State with her beautiful three-dimensional sculpture. Good job. And also, out of our competitors, we have another Best in State with a wonderful trip she built, a Cruz Agulera, good job. Also, out of our six entries, we had three Best in State this year, which is the best we've done, so I'm proud of that.
Hello, I'm Chris McQuarrie. I teach Architecture at Duquesne High School, and I wanted to present to you the competitors at TSA State Competition. The first one I have is Matthew Beaton. He got second place for his construction detail drum. Next I have Dixie Reed. She placed Best in State with her structural model of a residential home. And finally, Carlos Topar, who also received Best in State for his architectural landscape design. Out of our five entries, we had four Best in State and one second.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Corso, Education and Training Teacher from New Caney High School, and I'm here to recognize two students who participated as a team in TOISA Teach for SECOLA. So Christina Strebe. And Iris Robinson. They worked together as a team, and they placed first in Regionals and fourth at State.
Good evening, I'm Shereen Henny.
I'm Amber Reeves.
And we represent the Culinary Health Vitality Program. We had not one but two teams that placed at State, and one team advanced to Nationals. First up is our National Qualifying Team that will be going ahead in California. TK Almazar Torres. Laura Lorenz. And Stephanie Salazar Zumiga. And then for the Sports Nutrition Program, so Tonsay, he placed Myth in State. Thank you, guys.
This crack-up bit the makeup for the Blue Monies tonight, so I'm looking forward to Mr. Powell, the Associate Principal of New Caney High School. Tonight, I'd like to announce Nancy Toledo. She's representing the New Caney Blue Monies, Dance Team for Texas Dance Educators Association, Allstate, and so for the second year. We congratulate Nancy Toledo, we're so proud of you.
Good evening, Chuck Billysley, one of the advisors for Texas Student Association, Technology Student Association. They went to fight Florida State for Digital Video Production, placed eleventh. We have here with us tonight Ishmael Rong.
I'm the Deputy Advisor for New Caney High School. Students that we're about to recognize have worked extremely hard this year and over the years, they've all been there since they were freshmen. They're here, we make it to State, some make it to Nationals, so they put in a lot of work through marketing and education. And right now, I'd like to introduce to you a state qualifier, Ashton Wilford. And Ishmael Rami, who I think has not made it back now, but you just saw him with the first group. Alright, thank you guys very much.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Adams. I'm the Choir Director at New Caney High School, and I have five students who are advancing to the Texas State Solon Ensemble Contest, which will be held June 1st in Austin, Texas. The first student I'd like to recognize is Isaac Boonam. She is also advancing to State in Horace.
My name is Cindy Hallman. I'm the Costumeology Teacher at New Caney High School. Our entire, one thing I wanted to say is our entire Costumeology Senior Class is graduating with a Costumeology License. They've worked so hard earning sixteen gold medals, fifteen silver, and six bronze medals, with twenty-eight to State, and three students advanced to Nationals. Time to introduce our chapter. Our class president earned her Costumeology License and a bronze medal, Rebecca Medina. Our Vice President is Alma Guterres. Our Preliminary is Angelica Arandondo. Our Secretary is Joanna Resentis. Our Class Reporter, Yahire Rivera. Abigail Wiesna Zino. Christian Algren. That's the flat top right here. Our next three girls are advancing to the Nationals this summer in Kentucky, Lynn Louisville. And there's our Costumeology Team, thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Brian McQuarrie. I'm the Chief Director of New Caney High School, and today what we're doing is representing some students who did very well at our Solon Ensemble Contest, won the state. And first off is Potato Flores. Won the state, was a top trio. Our next student receiving this award is Jesse Hill. Jesse Hill is doing a brass quintet. Our next recipient is Bea Mason, and she's taking two ensembles, two percussion ensembles. Bea Mason. Next recipient is taking two ensembles as well, a brass quintet and a brass quartet, that is Giovani Santabagnas. And our final person that is here tonight is Casey Tang, and she's doing a clarinet and choir.
My name is Matt Parker. I'm Automotive Technology and Small Engines at New Caney High School. We had students compete in Skills USA, and following students advance to state competition. Our first is Justin Van Pelt, got bronze medal in Power Equipment Technology. Rafael Delgado, gold medal in Power Equipment Technology. Alejandro Pesicador, silver medal in Mobile Electronics Installation. Jacob Perkins, silver medal in Diesel Equipment Technology. And the only person to place at State, at District and State, my group, Destiny Duncan, silver medal in Hairspeech.
Go Destiny!
And a special mention to our last competitor, he stepped in with just a week to spare to help out the costume mythology from our school. We did a cross-chapter opening and closing ceremony, and I just wanted to mention him, it's Francisco Al.
Hi, I'm Edith Socheck, and I represent the History Fair Group of New Caney High School. And we are very excited to have twenty-four kids win the state this year, and not only with the twenty-four kids, they were all sophomores. And for the first time in district history, I believe it's district history, definitely school history, we made it to Nationals this year, we'll be competing in June. So, the first child up is Emily Anthony. And then Elizabeth Bravo. Bea Mason's next, this part of the group that made it to the finals, they didn't quite place this year, but hopefully next year we'll have a place in the state competition. Our next kid up is our national winner, she got second place overall in the individual exhibit. Her name is Valerie Morales, and we're very excited to have her. Giovani Santabagnas was also in that group with Bea Mason, who made it to the final round for the Documentary Group Exhibit. And then our sister Paulina. Look forward to competition next year and Nationals in June.
My name is Kira Barnes. I am an Agribusiness Teacher at New Caney ISD, this is Sherry Love, and also an Agribusiness Teacher at New Caney ISD. We're here today to present two state teams that qualified for the first time in New Caney history, and that will be the Foreign Business Team and the Advocacy Team. Foreign Business Management Team, competed this spring. The following team members consisted of Colby Gucci. And Kobe Barosa. Agriculture, Agribusiness, and Advocacy Team, competed in the Hall, Leadership and Bill Event, speaking contest. Following team members are Ashton Wilford. Kasey Thumbs. And Bria Foster-Hage. Very proud of these team members, thank y'all.
Hi there, my name is Chelsea Melson, and I'm the Theater Arts Director of New Caney High School. This is the first time in New Caney ISD history for our students to make it to the State Level in the Design Contest. It is connected to the One Act Play UIL Contest. Both students entered into the costume design and made it to the State Level. Adriana McCabe placed in the top fifteen with an exemplary one rating. Chloe placed sixth and received the medal for top ten placement with an exemplary one
For our high school, on behalf of New Caney ISD, we'd like to recognize the following students for their advancement to State in the UIL Competition Best Robotics. John Michael Stewart. These students finished seventh overall of over sixty teams in the large UIL competition
Good evening, my name is Amanda Park. I teach at Quarrie High School, and I have several young ladies who have competed paying for Certified Nurse Assistant. And the first one I'd like to recognize is Kimberly Casares. And Jasmine Cardona.
Hello, I'm ready to speak here, and I am the sponsor, Taffy, over here at Quarrie, and tonight I'll be recognizing ladies that advanced to State and competed in the Teach Tomorrow Summit. I would also like to add that Charlene will be advancing Nationals and will be competing in June at Education Rising Competition. So here we have Charlene Easley.
Hello, my name is Brianna Hedy with Quarrie High School, HOSA. I had a couple students that made it to State this year, I'd like to recognize Angel Portal, placed third place in Human Growth and Development. Ashley Alinkwitz, she is our new Area Six Report Officer, HOSA. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delaney Turner representing F C C L A Fashion Design. For our first award, we have Solly Rodriguez. She advanced to state in Recycle and Redesign. And then our next qualifier is Monica Herrera. She won first place at state and she is a national qualifier.
My name is Thomas Helgoff. I represent Porter High School Criminal Justice. We've been here this year with several making it to state and helping nationals. The first one is Hannah Hignon. Next is McKenna Heckles who is also a national representative for Skills USA. Tyler Dano. Jocelyn Aguilar. Josh Garcia who is also competing at a national event, Skills USA. Olivia Alexander. Gary Stoltz. Karina Diemas. Kelly McCaffrey. Romain Garza.
My name is also a officer for our Golden Race. Everyone. Kelly Sarano. And Erica Sarano. And last one is Ashley Alinkowitz who is also a national offensive candidate for Skills USA.
Again, Porter High School on behalf of New Caney High School would like to recognize the following students for advancing to the state level competition. Skills USA, Mary Chap, Jimmy Asaria. Shane Westerman. Luke Watson. Roman Vilais. John Michael Stewart. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Reese and I'm teaching health science. And we have Skills USA Medical. And our first person is Jackie Alkon. Maria Almorado. Joseph Batista. Kimberly Caseres. Bianca Keno. Jasmine Cardona. Isa Castell. Angel Cordell. Crystal Corpus. Mackenzie Crawford. Daniela Escobedo. Anaya Arus. Guanlipay Flores. Zabetti Gomez. Alma Musain. Kissa Musain. Erica Palomo. Lily Rosell. Brenda Soto. And Maria Velasquez.
Good evening, my name is Heidi High School. I teach animation, two D and three D at Porter High School. This evening I represent Technology Student Association. Our students are part of medical classes, engineering classes, and animation classes. Students were part and they competed at regional level, state level, and some of them qualified for the national competition. So this evening I will present them to you. Christina Chu. Stephanie Acosta. Jayda Feen, she's a national qualifier. Maria Luciar. International qualifier also. Jashine Ba, she's a national qualifier also. David Torgin, another national qualifier. And Joshua Garcia, our student also a national qualifier. Thank you very much.
My name is Marty Carville. I'm from Brady's List. We represent the culinary department at Porter High School for our F C C L A. And these are our winners for state competition. We're introducing Lisa Stur and Andres Bartinez.
Hello, I'm Amanda Zap and I'm here on behalf of the visual arts team. I'm presenting today a representation for Gracie Evers. And Kennedy Bonso.
Good evening, my name is Dr. Jenny Allen, the band director of Porter High School. I'd like to recognize a couple of students tonight as well. First off, I'd like to recognize Amara Ego and Madison Carter on qualifying for state solo and ensemble contests this year. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brad Harrison for making the Texas five-way all-state band this year. Second year basically second in the entire state of Texas in five days.
Hello, my name is Shelby Honeycutt. I'm a cosmetology teacher at Porter. And I'm here to recognize our Skills USA state qualifiers and national qualifiers. So first will be Jennifer Arteca. She got silver in community service. Next will be Maryana Minde. She got silver in community service. Next will be Andrea Baron. She got silver in American Spirit. Next will be Andrea Mateo. She also got silver in American Spirit. Next will be Lexi Bryant. She got silver in career pathway human services. Sydney Johnson. She also got silver career pathway human services. And Barlet Toctet. She also got silver in career pathway human services. Next we have Savannah Carey. She won gold in community action project. She will be advancing to nationals this summer, which will be in Louisville. Last but not least, we have Valerie Sanchez. She also got gold in community action project and will be going to nationals as well.
Good afternoon, my name is James Montori. I'm the head broadcasting journalist and advisor to the video teacher at Porter High School. So we're recognizing state qualifiers. And we have Gracie Ekers. Carol Cardenas. Okay, and then these two are people can I grab? Was this national finalist, state finalist, or national finalist for the National Federation Women's Competition? If anybody can hear the second. And Solly Rodriguez is our national winner. She won nationals for best review.
Hi guys, Duke of Porter High School powerlifting. First young lady is recognized, Ayana Holloman. And was also academic all-state. Next young lady is Leta Housman. And Desiree Stewart.
Hello, I'd like to present two young ladies who competed at Skills USA stage in the medical division. Joanna Martinez. And Maria Hermanez who is also a senior.
I'm Chris Booth with Porter DECA. We had another outstanding year with thirteen state qualifiers, three international conference qualifiers, and our first ever state officer. So without further ado, here they are. State qualifier, international participant, and Texas DECA vice president Gabriella Romero. International qualifier and state qualifier, Adleola Giese. State qualifier, Gabriel Maya. State qualifier, Roman Vilais. State qualifier, Jocelyn Aguilar. And state qualifier, Josh Garcia.
Isle number three on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for New Caney High School History Fair. Presented by Mr. David Voikano.
Thank you. We're here for consideration for our out-of-state trip to Washington DC for our history fair. And this is made in support for our history teachers. You could take a little time.
All right, so Valerie qualified first for individual exhibit at school round, then second place at the regional round, and then second overall for the state individual exhibit at state in Austin, back in April twenty-sixth. And this is the first time the school has ever qualified for nationals at history fair and I've made the district.
fair, and I've made the district for this because Porter is going to be able to go, so.
We'd like us consideration for her going to the out-of-state trip to Washington DC this summer.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for New Caney High School History Fair? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, just no, the motion is approved. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for Porter High School Technology Student Association presented by Mr. Warren.
Technology Student Association Porter High School competed in state competition in Florida recently, and five students have advanced to Nationals. National trip is in Washington DC, June 27th through July 5th. We're asking for permission for these students to attend the national competition. All the funds that take care of this competition are budgeted funds through our district's committee.
If there is no further question, a motion will be taken. All those approve, I mean, a motion will be approved, the out-of-state trip for Porter High School Technology Student Association. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, just no, the motion is approved. We appreciate you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Item five on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for Porter High School Best Buddies presented by Mr. Smith.
Hi, I'm Mr. Smith. This is Brandi Smith. So she, she's, for first year as a co-sponsor of Best Buddies. Best Buddies is an organization that we create opportunities for friendships with students with disabilities, and make friends with students in the school. And every, so Best Buddies, they would like to have us every year, have our incoming chapter president go to Indiana to the university there in Lexington. And every year, third weekend in July, so we would like consideration for my new faculty advisor and my chapter president, Angel Costello, go to Indiana.
I think it would be great experience. I have some students that are in Best Buddies in my classes that are going to fly into Florida. And I just recently met Angel, and I'm excited to be a part of the Best Buddies this year, so especially the new quarter. I think it would be really exciting to experience that, maybe just in a path next semester and have that.
So they'll teach techniques and ways to interact with the kids, is that what?
Since it is a conference, they have breakout sessions, and it's just kind of community-like, you know, different, I guess.
So there is a track for the chapter president, and there is a track for advisors also, so they'll both be learning skills they need.
And I believe I can take those back to class.
Outstanding. Perfect. Are there any other questions or further discussion?
I think it's such a great program, so thank y'all for attending.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for Porter High School Best Buddies? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, just no, the motion is approved. We really look forward to it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you so much for all you do. Item six on the agenda is open forum. Didn't have anybody sign up for that, so. Item seven on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074. Sorry, have to be here on time to sign up for that. If you'd like to speak next, if you'd like to speak next month, you'd be more than happy to speak, and then we want to hear. Sir, we have policies in place, and we have to adhere to the policies. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074. For purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071. For attorney consultation, Government Code 551.072. For deliberation regarding the purchase, lease, or real value property, any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes and open meeting. Current time is 6:56. Ms. Shaw, before we begin, could you please introduce our wonderful new employees?
Okay, so we have three new directors and three new principals for 1920. Our director of elementary research and wheel, Sam, I don't quite remember name, is Holly Banks. Political learning is Greta Rama. And director of special education is Kate Patterson. Principal at New Caney Middle School is Holly Gray. Principal in New Caney Elementary is Jennifer Angelic. And our principal at Brooklyn Forest is Erica Gutierrez.
The board enters closed meeting at 9:17 PM, and when thou reconvene, no concessions. Item eight on the agenda is reports and proposals for board members.
I'd like to say, as a board week, it was really encouraging to see how we reacted to the stuff that we went through last couple week, or last week, two weeks, I don't remember how many it was. But two weeks ago, I saw everybody really did what they needed to do, and it's proud for us because, you know, we really enjoyed seeing us in a crisis react. I was in the high school in New Caney, I didn't get to go to Porter because I couldn't make it. But watching those guys integrate, making them do what they needed to do, and I know at all the campuses, we were doing the same thing. We greatly appreciate you guys taking care of our kids, and that's, it was a big deal. And some of you guys were, it was just a huge undertaking, and we as a board would like to say thank you to all you guys that did what you needed to do for us, that protect these kids. And it was a stressful time, I don't know for you guys, but stressful time for them. And it worked out wonderfully, so hats off to you guys on a great job.
Item nine on the agenda is consideration of consent calendar, consideration of minutes, consideration of findings report, consideration of purchasing report, and consideration of personnel report. Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items in the consent calendar? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 10 on the agenda is consideration and discuss resolution for paying employees during the storm closure days and delegation of authority to administration to determine potential additional premium compensation presented by Mr. Freeman.
Speaking of those bad weather days, starting Tuesday, May 7th, I should have the copy of the resolution there. Similar to the one that we did back in the party, just the same process, but that would go from the Tuesday to Monday, and we were able to come back and have kids in school. So as you read through it, to see positive DEA, and I am the fact that we all approved that teachers can be ordered, that staff can be paid through the time that they were not at school because of this, these bad weather days. And then, as you go further down, just the board trustees could authorize the administration to compensate employees for those workdays, and also for any premium pay, which is appropriate for those that have come back to work during the time that they were out. So I should consider the resolution for those bad weather days.
And the questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the resolution for paying employees during the storm closure and delegation of authority to administration to determine potential additional or premium compensation? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of the low attendance waiver.
Requesting approval to submit an alternate waiver for New Caney Middle School.
Any other questions or further discussion? Any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the low attendance waiver? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Time is 9:22.